All right, Keith.
Okay. Is the screen up on everyone's monitor? Can you see the worksheet?
No, I don't know.
Okay, you cannot, so I'll have to make sure I share that. So, let's see here. How about now? Can I see your screen?
Yes.
Worksheet? Good, okay. All right, so what this is telling us, this came in with revenues and expenditures. As shown for the mayor level, we had a use of 2.259,259,049 cents. And these are the items that we've identified thus far. I can go through them one at a time here in a minute. We normally have a maximum target in the neighborhood of 1.6 million. So we were over before, we made an exception because we made a transfer of 570,000. So we're still over our normal targeted variance of by about 103,000 before we make any additional adjustments. So that just gives you an idea where we are in the big picture. And then we have these items that we've brought up as possibilities. The first one I have is, I know there's going to be a discussion today of the landlord licenses. We talked about putting a procurement, a computer for the procurement at 580. I had these items listed as discussion points, training for ACDD, fire pay plan, field op, electrician, field op, chipper, and a daycare program. Since we've met, there's been a few adjustments that various departments have wanted to insert, to present to you as possibilities, that some of them are just errors or adjustments that were discovered later. One of them was part-time for field ops. They had meant for 16,848, the same as last year. It would be, it would still be compared to last year for what they requested. They just misunderstood the guidance from administration. We had to true up our grant matches, as the grants have been continued to develop. And there's three items. There's a net total addition of 18,500 for these three grants right here. So that also was inserted. The good news is, is the mayor's office, we had a typo. So there was 39,000 coming off there. So, so far, the sum of those adjustments is a net decrease of 4,200. And then we've proposed to insert the homeless manager step and health for 11,397. And then the fire department, there's been a discussion on the email accounts. Julia, should I take that out? Is that out now? We don't need to bother with that?
Yeah, that can come out.
So I'll take that out. So if you guys have any questions about any of these items we just threw at you today on the finance adjustments, be happy to try to answer those.
The one thing I know that came up afterwards, I had some discussion with the mayor about it, was the Chipman contribution to the Chipman Center.
Okay.
That was 2,500, I think. Wasn't it, Julia?
Needs to be added.
I didn't, I'd never, well, hold on. Maybe I did see a document from them. Let me, let me see if I can pull it up real quick.
Yeah, there is a document, I know.
Yeah, yeah, I came late, that's right. I don't have the attachment, I don't think. Hold on, ah, here it is. Coming up. Yeah, 2,500.
I had, I had a discussion with Kim this morning, seeing if we could help support that since it came in after the date. And we believe strongly that on the advertising side, we have about $1,000 that we can take out of our advertising budget. So Keith, if you want to put 1,000 in there to offset, that's a, that's a start, anyway.
So you want to reduce your advertising by 1,000 and put the 2,500 in, or?
Yeah. So our net, what's our net difference? What are we short now?
Well, this isn't, this was just a general guideline. I just wanted you to know in the big picture, you know, where we stood.
Yeah.
You know, we never, we never hit that number exactly, just.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah, it's just good to see where we are in the neighborhood. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, based on average.
I can put that number up here so you can see it on a regular basis, so you don't have to scroll down there as you make changes.
Yeah, the average. The difference is this year that we really have no clue what's going to happen upfront. So if we use the same numbers, that were the same target number that we've used in the past, we're not that far off.
Exactly. I put that note here, like, this doesn't include the potential effect of COVID. So if that was a note, that's a good, could result in a, even if we used our normal target, we could easily have a million or more of a withdrawal surplus.
Well, he, he just.
All right, the, what, while we're waiting for the mayor, let's go through the council, any questions they have that they made notes on relative to anything that was covered during the previous sessions. Mr. Bo, did you have anything that you want to highlight? Let's stay away from the landlord licensing right now until the mayor gets on. Everything else is pretty much fair game.
Good morning, everybody. I think in a couple, I mean, what I had on my list was some of the items that Keith has up here. And I think, you know, our discussion about training was a key one. And I know that they were going to take some time and look citywide to make, you know, and I know that's going to take some time. But I didn't know if anybody had any answers on the HCD training. And I know we had discussed the chipper. And I didn't know if they had gotten a price on something like that or not, just for informational purposes, not sure we're going to, we're going to go down. I know it's something that we do need, and it might be a next year thing. Trying to think. Yeah, and, yeah, I think that's, I think there was that daycare thing also. I didn't know if we had found any information out on that, on what we can do with that. So I think those are my main ones that, and pretty much what I had was what we put on that list, because everything else we've gone through.
Yeah, I think that that's, that's a certainly, anything on my list is up on there. And I think that we're okay. Does, do you want Anthony, or, I mean, Andy, or Julia, you want to comment on any of the, any of those pieces, especially like the training one?
Sure. So there's an exercise that we have with all of our employees. When we go through the budget process, that we first ask them to provide essential items. But then we also ask them to budget flat as much as possible, really reflect them on their budget, see what areas that they might have had excess and kind of moved moneys around. The first exercise that we had with housing community development was to find additional funding within the budget to provide additional training. I don't know if that exercise was completed completely. So we do believe that there is additional funding, an additional need for training, just whether it's their department or overall. The question is, do we fund it with new money? Or do we, you know, pull out the pencil and see if we have it within the current line items that exist? So there's two different strategies. But there is definitely a need for some additional training. Now, the quantity or capacity of training has slightly changed with this next year. Lot of high-dollar trainings are usually lodging, travel, et cetera. And then in-person trainings. Most of that stuff has already started getting canceled for the first two quarters of the year. So they're reducing, or eliminating it down to more of a Zoom meeting. So for example, ICMA, a price tag of $800, maybe like $100. So we may not have to fund the full training amount, but there is definitely a need for some additional training. The exact figure?
Let me jump in. Everett did email this to everybody after our initial session. And he put an additional price tag of 2731. But I do think Andy's point about, you know, some virtual sessions and things like that, and, you know, looking, sharpening the pencil, as he says, could work. So maybe it's someplace in the middle.
Yeah, I think the one thing that we, based on the whole concept of we don't know where we're going with this COVID thing. I think that the way that I would look at it, my personal opinion, is that we should look at mandatory trainings, which are mandated by law, and then try to look through the, look through the documents and get your pencil and eraser out and see where we are going into maybe the second third of the year. That would be my personal recommendation. Because we really don't know what's going to happen. We can target what we normally target. And that may not be good enough, because we may be drawing based on what the revenues are from the state and feds. So we'll have to see.
Sorry, if you look at the spreadsheet that Everett shared, I've got it up. It's for mandatory training this coming year, it's 1390.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe it's a thousand bucks, or.
Yeah, yeah.
Comfortable landing place.
Yeah, I think that's a good approach. Let's see, April, you're on now. Anything on your list that is not on that list that Keith went through?
Oh, no, uh-uh, no.
Okay. Michelle, anything on your list that is not on that list?
No, no, but we, everything else was, everything that I was going to talk about is on there.
Okay, great. Is D'Angelo on yet, or no?
Let me see.
I don't see her.
I don't see her.
Okay, all right. I guess then we're waiting, we're just waiting to go over the mayor and because I know there's some changes that he's got.
Yeah. Andy, do you want to touch on our plan for, with surveys and stuff for the daycare? And maybe looking at that as a
Sure.
research and getting ready for FY '22?
Yep, so we are in the process, are about to a little bit of supply and demand. We have to see who would want to take advantage of it, kind of what they're able to pay, willing to pay, and get some feedback. We kind of have a tentative budget that we started to put together, but we want to see who would be utilizing the service. And this is going to take a little bit of time. So our goal would be to have it as part of the budget presentation next spring. And as we go through this survey that we're sending out to all of our staff, we're going to compile that data, and then we're going to have a task force or a group kind of sit, digest that information, and then start putting some recommendations for it to our group. And Michelle, I know you had showed some interest. We may invite you to be part of that group, just to give us some of your knowledge and experience. But our goal would be to, if we can set it up so that it's self-sustaining, it's just creating a flat-line item with some revenues that offset the expenses. If we go through the process and realize there needs to be some sort of subsidy to be able to make it more affordable, that would be an essential item that was presented to council to see if there's an appetite for that. But this is going to take a little bit of time. We don't necessarily want to rush through it. Yes, it doesn't help people immediately, but we're kind of growing for the, for the future. And we don't want to rush into something like this. And most people aren't even sure what their daycare is going to be over the next three to six months period. So that's kind of the update there. So definitely looking at it, but it's paused right now for the discussions next, next budget cycle.
Great. It's a shame, though, that we couldn't do something. Well, I mean, if it turns out to be break even, then you could start at any time.
Yeah, we can do a budget amendment and just get the, just get the, you know, the capacity to be able to spend it and have that offset. Once we figure out how many people are interested, then it is securing a facility that would be suitable for, for that capacity and those needs. And then we'd have to negotiate how we'd get into that space. And then we could start to line up staff and stuff. So we have this, we have a pretty, pretty strong objective and outline of how we want to move forward. But first, we need to create some demand. But to make it work for a break even, we need anywhere from 15 to 20 participants to make it financially work with the overhead because of staffing capacities and stuff. And while still making it affordable, not matching or being above what current market rate is. So again, if we're looking at a sliding scale, we need to make sure we can, we can do all that stuff.
Andy, could I ask a question? Do we know how many employees have children under the age? Do we have any statistics of how many we have?
So we are sending out a survey. I just saw the final review. We made a couple of changes to it. It should be going out this week to poll our entire group. We could figure out how many people would have kids. The question is, how many would be interested in, you know, have kids and then would be suitable or want to participate in this activity? So we'll have those figures here within a couple of weeks. But I don't have an, I don't have an exact, exact number.
Well, I do believe if it's reasonable, and if it's a lot cheaper than most daycares, I think a lot of employees would be rather happy to be a part of the daycare for the city.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great idea as well. And actually, I've been thinking about it. You know, between the mayor's office and Julia, that's a pretty big area.
Good, I have it around our feet.
Please, don't even joke. I was going to say, the location's always the hardest part, finding the location. So yeah, I mean, just set up a temporary shop.
There you go.
Well, you know, that is interesting, because, you know, we've, we've figured out teleworking. And, you know, businesses are downsizing or something. So maybe it is, you know, maybe we kick IT out of their space and put a daycare over there.
There's, there's also a couple of things. There's, there's a couple of different ways you can look at it. Is it a home-based daycare? So you're actually, or literally in a house, kind of like Newton Community Center? Or is it more of a commercialized space? And then you have to have proximity, if you're doing early daycare, to what I'd consider outdoor space or playgrounding?
Right, so, yeah, the numbers, you've got to be able, so say that, say that we do have 15 families who want to participate. You figure that's probably one or two kids per family. You're looking at, say, for childcare of about 30 kids, you would need, for square footage for the building, you would need something, I haven't checked yet, in a couple of years. You would need something along the lines of 2,500 square feet indoor space and at least 1,500 square feet outdoor space. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's finding a location is really honestly going to be the hardest part, trust me. Years trying to find a facility location. And if you're doing a home-based, you're, you're looking, I mean, if we're talking about just reimbursing people for a home-based childcare, rather than us running a facility, you know, those, you can only have up to eight kids in a home-based daycare. So I don't know how well it would work out. But I think, you know, if we can find a location, that's, that's everything. I mean, that's, that's going to be the biggest hurdle we're going to have. There's very few places have the indoor space and the outdoor space.
Well, I think it's important, certainly a priority for everybody that's spoken on the council. So I think that that's, that's a good, and we have some resources that have been through it. So that's, that's great. Julia, is the mayor on yet, or no?
He's not, but I got information from Tom on the chipper. Under a state contract, we can get a new chipper for approximately $40,000. And it, you know, their argument was that it does break down significantly. Current things. I think the most recent challenge was when a tree fell near Norm Conway's house. And I think we had to rent a, rent a chipper as well for that. So, you know, it's a challenge, for sure.
Yeah.
Just don't set a chipper around my husband at all, because ours broke down. It's been an ordeal.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of money. And I understand the need, but I think we got to, we got to be a little bit careful. I saw the mayor actually pop up. So, Mr. Mayor, good morning.
Good morning.
We've gone over a lot of the items that we've had. So why don't you bring us up to speed on the items that you have proposing changes?
So I see that Keith has brought up the adjustment worksheet.
Yeah, we went over that, and we've made some, a couple of changes on it. And we're not that far off now, but I know there's some changes you want to discuss. So let's, let's.
So, let me defer to Julia for a second. Did we discuss, what has been discussed so far?
The chipper, the council advertising budget, and contribution to the Chipman Community Center.
Okay, all right. Well, I do want to make sure, I do want to confirm that the, the partners who we have supported for the last five or six years, that they were funded. Most of them got their letters to us late for some reason, not, not sure why. But Chipman was not the only one. I think Lower East Shore Heritage Council was late as well. But I just want to confirm that before, you know, before the budget is finalized. So we may need to do a little review there. We also had an adjustment that was necessary based on an evaluation of one police supervisor. And that, that person's adjustment, I believe, is something we can accommodate in the budget without an adjustment at council level. There is an adjustment needed per a pay plan with the mayor's office for one of the mayor's office employees. Something that is an agreement that was set in place two years ago, or over a year ago, that we did not accommodate this year. So we'll need to make an adjustment there. It amounts to a total of $5,000. And then the only other item that I know of is the rental registration and landlord licensing fee increase, which I know has been a hot topic for, for you all. I know you've been lobbied hard on this. You know, I believed that as a sign of good faith for cooperation, for keeping people housed during this crisis, we would also show good faith from our end through a cooperative relationship through a difficult time with our landlord partners. Last night, I did not see evidence of that cooperative relationship. Or I saw a limited evidence of that. I expected a cooperative relationship. So I'm concerned about that. I would, I would recommend that, and I was going to recommend that it be removed, the increase be removed for this year. While I think it's justified, I think we could remove it for this year and take the difference from surplus, recognizing that we're, we know we're going to take a hit. And, you know, rather than, rather than have that back on the private sector, you know, we'll, we'll take the hit, again, for people helping to keep our lowest-income residents housed during this crisis. But I think still, before the final vote of the council, that should be contingent on the cooperative relationship of our, of our landlord constituents.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I tend to agree with you. The only, the only thing that that I can say around, about the increase in the fees is that to the person that I've been in contact with, they all said they're going to pass the increase on to their renters. And I struggle with that, even, you know, I, they need to support us. I do have one question.
Well, Mr. President, if I could.
Under the. Go ahead.
If I, if I could, no, they're not, because they can't. Because if you pass the legislation, that would be illegal. They'd be charged with a misdemeanor if they do.
Oh, during the, during the COVID period you're talking about?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. I, one other question. The announcement that we made about rent relief, when somebody applies for that, I assume the process is someone will apply for assistance? Will that check go to the renter? Or will it go to the landlord?
I'd have to defer to Cheryl Meadows at Salisbury Neighborhood Housing on that. But I suspect that it would be paid to the landlord, that it would be.
Yeah, that would, that would be my preference, because that would then.
These are, yeah, and these are existing programs that, that already exist that don't. There are, there are procedures for this that already exist in past rental assistance programs that are not funded through the City of Salisbury. So SNHS is the facilitator, and they've got the experience with federal and state guidelines on the dispersment of monies for rental assistance. So this would just work like any other rental assistance program. And in which case, you know, it's not, it's not just cash paid to a tenant with the hopes that they fulfill their obligation to their landlord. They'd have to prove the deficit, show what it is, show what the, you know, show what the difference is. And, and then it would be paid to their landlords.
Okay, could you, could you ask Cheryl maybe to send that procedural thing to the council so we can look at it?
Sure, so I know you'll be getting the CDBG legislation. So it'll come to you. It'll come to you, and you'll have a public hearing as well. There, there's a five-day, or there's a five-day public comment period. Normally, it's a 30-day period. It's five days for the CDBG COVID-19 money. And at that time, we'll make sure Cheryl is available, and all of the guidelines are available for your review.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. So we've gone through this. Keith, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Keith, where are we on the bottom? I can't see because it's cut off a little bit. What's the differential now? How close are we to our target? 98 to 13.
Keith, you're muted.
Yeah, I just pointed out that, so we don't have to scroll down. I just posted it.
I just posted it right up here so it will update real time as we make any changes.
Gotcha, okay, alright. So as it stands now, the 150 is, uh, is in there?
No, no, so how it, how it is, is I've got a, I've got a list, it's like going to the restaurant. This is what you can have and then when, unless it's in here, it's not, uh, it's not selected. So, yeah. Yeah, so I don't, I don't put them in there unless you say to.
Alright, that's assuming that they're cooperating. The landlords are cooperating.
Yeah, if you, if you take the $15 out, then I would have to put the reduction to revenues of 150.
Gotcha, okay, fine. Alright, um, any other comments from the council members? Mr. Boda?
On the landlord issue, if you've got, and I, and I know we have, you probably have a group of people who, you know, don't follow all or most of the rules. Is, is there a way to create a system of, if you've got, you know, landlords that, hey, they're, they're on it, they take care of things. Or if you've got the ones that are not, that with these registration fees, if they're continually violating things, variety of things. Are, are, you know, are we able to just like, okay, so this year, your, your fees are going to be more? Is that, is there, is there a program or something we can come up with in that, in that sense?
I don't think so. I don't think that's legal since fees can't be punitive. They have to be reflective of the expense.
So is there, yeah, so if there's ones that are, is there a way, you know, instead of maybe making it punitive, if they're a good lord, good landlord and they're able to get a, a discount or something? I'm just, you know, just throwing that out there.
Sure, but, but the, the downside of that is then you're asking taxpayers, homeowners and businesses in Salisbury to subsidize landlords for the process of reviewing their registration and licensing applications each year, which I don't, I don't think is fair.
Okay. That's all. Alright, thank you. Mrs. Jack, Ms. Jackson, anything?
I was kind of thinking on the, um, landlord licensing thing, like mirror, but not only on that aspect, but, um, when the Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, um, sends the money, is that person, is there a name on that check? Or is it, um, an account number or something that they could verify that this money is for the person? And how does the person know that that money's been sent?
You'd have to ask Cheryl, I'm sure she'll speak to that. Again, this is exactly like any other federal or state rental assistance program. It's not as if it's money that evaporates or could be somehow hidden as not paid. I mean, it's a fairly simple, straightforward, probably a contract that everybody has to sign to receive the money.
Well, I, I do understand that, but I'm saying how is it distributed to the landlords? I mean, does, is the person's name, the renter's name on it? Is there an account number on it? If there is an account number.
I'm sure it's just a, I'm sure it's just a deposit into the landlord's account or, uh, you know, like a wire or transfer or a check.
Okay.
To, to the landlord.
Mr. Mayor, I've, I've participated in SNHS program when I bought my first house. So I, it's a, it's a grant agreement. There's a, a application you've got to fill out, you've got to sign. So there is a thorough process that will document, you know, sort of every stage of the way. So I think, you know, the lit, the, the renter will know that it's been paid and, and, and I think it should be probably crystal clear, clear for them.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you, Julia.
Ms. Blake, anything? She's not on yet. Okay, Mrs. Gregory, anything else?
No, it's been said.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I, I guess this is, what is, the, the outstanding item that's, that's up there now is, um, the 150. And, and based on how the meeting or how the input is from the landlords is going to before the adoption, that's how we're going to base our case. This is, I just want to check, make sure that everybody's okay with that approach, that currently it's in there, but, uh, I mean, it's not in there, but it might be. So we're talking about 150,000 of more or less of, from the total that appears now, depending on which way it goes. Mr. Boda, you, how are you feel about that?
When you say you're depending on people's response, I'm trying to gauge what, what is meant by that.
Well, I'm assuming that the mayor is, is in, has been discussing this with, I know he has, with a group of the, of the landlords. And, um, you know, we're, we're seeing, it's behavior says a lot.
Yeah.
And I think that, um, the mayor can speak to it and maybe he wants to now or not. But we still are seeing evidence of behavior that doesn't go along with what's being said. Is that fair to say, Mr. Mayor?
While we were in last night's meeting, while we were there, while people were expressing, you know, new on stop position to the proposed efforts by the city to stop people from being illegally evicted and to illegally remove from their properties and stop people from being, taken advantage of during this crisis. Companies that were represented by the individuals on the call who were speaking to you were actively notifying their tenants that they had to be out by Friday and that their locks would be changed. They knew they were breaking the law when they did it. They were doing it last night during the meeting. We have evidence that it was happening last night while the meeting was going on with people who were on the call. I cannot stress enough that the city attempting to recognize the financial burden on landlords and be a good faith partner by reducing a proposed justifiable increase to a fee for service rendered is not something that we should do for an industry that is not living up to the values of our citizens, that is not living up to the values they express to us and behind the, behind our very backs are doing the opposite. And I don't think that if our so-called partners will refuse to act in good faith, I don't think that we should be doing favors. So it's important that the legislation discussed last night be passed. I think if we have true partners who are there, you know, saying, we, we also don't want to create homeless people. We also don't want to put that burden on the taxpayer, that we want to do our part responsibly and comply with the law. And we don't want to pass on increases to rent during this period of time, recognizing the undue economic stress everybody is under. Then I think absolutely now is the time for us to be taking extraordinary measures, like not implementing a proposed justifiable, a quantifiable increase. I, I think the alternative is proceed and proceed boldly forward on all fronts. So, you know, I think it really depends on who we're working with. The companies I'm talking about will receive notice today. You know, that with, that they violated the law, not city law yet. The city will work on that, but they violated state law. And, uh, and they're going to have to deal with the consequences. I've personally called every landlord who we've been notified by. They've all expressed remorse or shock and that they didn't know that it was illegal. They didn't know they couldn't do that. And, um, you know, last night, while people were telling us to our faces, oh, we know that's illegal, it should never happen. And not only that, not only do we know it's illegal, uh, but those people should be punished. Those very same people talking to us, many of them, were actively notifying their residents they had to get out and they had until Friday. We've got documentation of it all. So it's frustrating.
Has this been reported to, I mean, who's monitoring that at the state level?
I couldn't tell you. We can certainly share it with the Attorney General, but.
But I mean, if it's, if it's the governor's executive order and, and they're violating it.
Nope, they're not violating, uh, the, the governor's executive order. They're violating due process, actually. So.
Well, if they're evicting somebody, that is a violation.
No, it, no, it, no.
Cause he said no evictions.
No, no, it is not. That is not what the governor's order says. The governor's order says the courts cannot be used for evictions because the courts will be closed. And the, and the reasoning behind that is, is, uh, you know, has to do with not wanting to interfere with a contract by saying you cannot tell someone to get out. What we are doing is saying that you can't remove them and creating a city infraction as a result of that. But they already can't. It's illegal to remove somebody from your property without a court order. But yeah, I, I don't know who would punish that. I don't know who would, um, but we've got, you know, probably, gosh, just in the last week, another dozen examples. Last night, three more examples during the call that we were on. And again, with people who were on that call talking to us. So, look, I, I just don't think that, um, you know, the city should take a financial hit to our reserves on a justifiable increase to a fee for service if the people and industry that you're trying to assist, recognizing their own financial impacts and wanting to be sensitive to that, are literally trying to place a burden of new homeless people onto the taxpayers. It's indefensible. It's indefensible. It shouldn't happen, it's immoral. And anybody who wants to challenge me on that, I'm happy to debate in, you know, the public square. But this is, this is not acceptable. I don't think we should stand for it and I don't think we should be doing favors if they're going to fight us on this. But I do, I do recognize.
Yeah.
I do recognize the value in, uh, in helping people out financially by not imposing a fee increase at this time. But again, I think that's incumbent entirely upon whether or not we have people that are not going to put the burden of new homeless people onto us and the taxpayer or if we have people who are going to rather, in a rather underhanded fashion, as evidenced by last night, do exactly that.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, with that, you know, and, you know, and I, and I've heard a, a couple of things as well. I mean, I'm comfortable leaving the increase in.
Okay.
There's other council members, I mean, they have their.
Any other council members? Ms. Jackson, you want to add to that?
You know, it's kind of bad because you, we end up infringing and hurting the, the good landlords and the good realtors. If they're complying with whatever is going on. And I'm like you, Jack, this is going to be passed on, even if we think it's not, they're going to pass this on to the tenant.
But if they, but if they do pass it on.
But how we know that?
How do we know of all of the violations that we know about today?
Yeah, but you know what a lot of people won't call? A lot of people are afraid because a lot of people will be afraid that they're going to get, be evicted, period. And a lot of people, let me, let me let you understand now, in my, in my district, I hear this all the time, people are afraid to say anything in fear of eviction, even if they do, even if they know that they can't be some, most, a majority of them will still be afraid to say something. Now, for those who are saying something, that's because they do know their rights. But for like some of the elderly people who are living in some of these places, they're not gonna, um, they're not gonna understand that. They're, they're, I, I've dealt with this many a times.
Let me do, let me do you a favor and point you to the legislation that was proposed in the accompanying executive order. The legislation requires that within five business days of the passage of the legislation, every tenant in the city of Salisbury receives a letter drafted by me and they must receive it now in hard copy form per the legislation. They must receive it within five business days, every single one. Each instance of a landlord not providing their tenant with that letter is itself a misdemeanor. We will insist that that letter be provided in writing, posted on a door, slid under a door or in a mailbox. That letter will say, do not leave your apartment. You are not evicted, even if you are notified. You, you do not have to leave whether or not someone tells you you have to leave. The only circumstances under which you will, uh, should leave is if a court orders you to. It's going to be, I think, one of the most important parts of this legislation is the, uh, is the requirement of notice. The requirement for notifying tenants of their rights. I think that is one of the most important things because as you said, uh, people don't know their rights in many cases. And so that, that notice is going to be the critical step one to this process.
Mrs. Gregory, anything to add?
I mean, I think everybody pretty much can gather what my opinion of it is, but, um, you know, these landlords are sitting here and, and pleading for mercy that they would not show their tenants if given them a chance. And I just, last night, the, even the, knowing that, that Jake had been talking to them and telling them, hey, we're willing to work with you if you work with us. And then they still dogpile in our meeting in the comments. That infuriates me. And now knowing that while they were doing that, they were still trying to evict people. To quote Clue, flames on the side of my face. I, I just, it, it makes me angry and, um, I, I'm not inclined to work with them at all at this point. So, you know, I would, I would be happy to support keeping the D in.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Angela?
I, I did, I did join and I'm sorry I was late. I had a student at school, I had to take care of something urgently, first thing this morning for a student in crisis. So I joined as soon as I could. And I apologize, I'm just getting in on the back end of this conversation. But could someone provide us a recap? I do have an understanding of the topic of the conversation, but just a small recap. Apparently last night it was, uh, or chats or something made in regards to the city council's efforts for the new legislation, is that accurate?
If I could, if I could summarize, last night while we were on the meeting, individuals who were on the call had proceeded to send out information to their tenants relative to being out of their place by the end of the week. These were people that participated in the call and the mayor's point was, this is not good faith. And we originally had considered, we had originally considered removing the fees increase this year because of the COVID situation. Because the fees as they exist do not cover the costs of the, of the, uh, the fee. I, I, sitting here listening and, and having spoken with the mayor last night, my opinion is, is starting to harden. And, and let me, let me say this. For those people who profess to be working with their tenants and working with us, belong to an organization called SPOA. And right now, I think it is incumbent on the total membership of SPOA to call the people who are doing these things. And I, believe me, I know you know who they are. And convince those people that either they're gonna play ball or the total SPOA organization will suffer. And when I say suffer, it's not a punishment. This is paying for something that is necessary to produce the documents and get the licenses out. So, the members of SPOA, the good members of SPOA, the, the, the members that walk the talk, get out there and do your stuff because you have a week or two at the most to convince those people to play ball. Otherwise, if you don't do that, then I believe, based on what the council is saying, that we are gonna pass that legislation with no changes.
Correct. And agree.
So, I think, I think we've said enough and we've beaten this horse to death.
Well, Jack, Jack.
I know, I know we're all angry. I am. And we have the documentation to do it. So, let's, let's stop playing games and let's get the job done.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I offer one thought on timeline?
Sure.
You know, uh, Mr. Tillman has provided the timeline for the emergency passage of the legislation discussed last night and advanced last night. So, I think we have five days total. Not between each hearing, but five days total that, that need to pass from the advertisement, which has not happened yet, to a final vote, which would require two meetings in a fairly short period of time. But I, I believe that if that were to happen and if the legislation were to pass, then, you know, I, I think we could certainly remove the, the fee since your vote on the budget is, is when?
Twenty-six, the first, the first.
Next Tuesday?
It's the second reading, yes.
Okay. Or they could happen on the same day.
Well, well, I, I would ask that we just think about the mechanics of building the entire budget book and all, all that goes into this. It's really, today is, is, we set this as the last day for a good reason. So, I would, I would encourage everyone to make a decision and you could make a budget amendment for that year, maybe, uh, at any time to take that fee away. But I would encourage you to try to strike a budget today.
Well, let me just. Let me, let me ask a question. We still, if we pass it on the eighth of June, that would still be, meet our guideline, right?
How's it gonna crawl into the documents, though, that have been, that are due to you on the eighth?
Yeah.
It could be processed as a budget amendment easily. I would just make, it's, 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 it's still accomplishes exactly the same thing. The only thing I'm asking is, should we make a budget amendment as opposed to a part of the adopted budget? Because we have a deadline for passing our adopted budget of today as far as getting it prepared for cancel.
Okay. I don't, I don't, I I don't have an issue.
I think what we have to do next week anyway, if, if we take this fee out, we have to do an amendment on the ordinance to, to remove the fee. So, anything that will be done would have to be done at the meeting as far as removing the fee.
That's, that's what I was thinking, that an amendment at the table of the fee ordinance is, is what we're talking about. Now, you're talking about the, the, uh, the resultant math, Keith, right?
True, yes. So, yeah, that, that in order to, since the mechanics are today, we, we make our decisions and we, and build, there's a lot of processing to build the final budget packet that comes to you in the form of that ordinance. It's not just a matter of editing that ordinance. It's at the table. So, what I was recommending, it, it's no problem if we wanted to do that on the eighth, we might process that, um, as a budget amendment and an amendment to the fee ordinance separately.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, go ahead.
I think you could go either way on this. I mean, you know, what, one way would be to, uh, once again, as, as we've tried to demonstrate, show good faith and say, "Yeah, we'll take it out, but, you know, we'll add it if, you know, we see this continued behavior," which is, you know, simultaneously unethical and dishonest. You know, we were lied to last night, you know, by the people we were talking to, by some of the people we were talking to. And, or to say, you know, "No, it remains and the proof will be in the pudding." You know, with willingness from all council members and the mayor to, to remove it at the council table. I think, I think you could go either way on that. I mean, again, I think you've tried to demonstrate good faith. I, I've tried to do same. We could remove it for that reason and try to demonstrate that good faith for now and, and deal with the, the change at the council table depending on the, the behavior and what we see from here on out. Again, I think there, both options are viable.
Yeah, I, I, I like what you just described. I think that that's the way to do it. That'll give us time to see what they're, if they're serious or not. And we can do it at the council table. I think that's probably the appropriate way.
Uh, can I interject? Just two, two points I wanted to bring up in regards to the subject that I heard last night. I just didn't know if we were gonna consider looking at maybe changing some of the language of the ordinances or, or not. I, I don't know. And then there was something that Mr. Cannon brought up that was interesting about the 12-month payment. Looking like realistically, if, um, these constituents in these situations could possibly pay even 50 or 75 bucks extra a month towards their back rent, it could take possibly four or five years to pay off. Was there any discussion this morning about looking at the timeframe for, what is it, budget planning or, um, for back payment with them, adjusting that or drop it because I'm sure they're gonna need a timeframe to pay. But I understood the point of looking at take someone to pay it off if in fact they're only paying 50 or 75 dollars a, a month towards their back rent.
There was no discussion about that this morning.
Okay. Well, it's, it's, the bottom line is, I think, is that we're in a pickle. And I think that we, we've made good faith efforts to, you know, protect the residents and with, um, something, you know, and either or, you know, "Help us out here or we'll reduce the fees." And it seems like, you know, that wasn't received very positively. So, I, as much as I know that I'm gonna get some backlash on it myself, and I know this is a hard place for all of us to be in, I think we just need to go ahead and, and do both in parallel. And then if we need to make adjustments in the, in the future, come, they're doing it. An adjustment. I don't know. This might what?
Well, I, I think the proposal that's on the table of, of making the decision about removal of the, the fee is probably the best way to go because it gives us some time to see how the behavior changes. So, that would be my recommendation. Uh, I'll poll the, uh, the council now to see if we have agreement with that. Mr. Boda?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
All right. Mark, are you on?
Mark is not on, on this.
Okay. Well, you'll, you'll, we'll make sure that, that everything's appropriate in terms of the, the sequence of events. Um, and then what we'll be saying today is that this is what we're gonna go with going in. Uh, and, um, if changes are made, we'll do it at the table. Okay? Just, Mr. Mayor?
Just one question for clarity. Is the only change that's gonna be made at the table to change the fee ordinance from 75 to 60? And you're just gonna let the budget lay as far as the revenues that were in the budget? Is, you're not gonna try to edit all of the budget documents at the table, are you?
No. No.
Just gonna change the fee and we'll live with the, the deficiency that results?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, just gonna change the fee ordinance at the table and we're not gonna edit then the budget? We're just gonna let the budget lay?
Yes.
Okay.
Just so I'm clear, are we, we're leaving it at 60 or are we leaving it at 70 and, and switching? Switching if need be. I'm just, I don't think I'm on the same page.
We're, we're leaving it at 75 and at, at the table, they'll, they'll change it to 60 if they, if they choose to.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Mayor?
Nothing else from me.
Okay. Julia, anything from you?
Um, for clarity's sake, um, did we give Keith the okay to plug in the items we discussed this morning?
The thousand, yeah. Center.
Okay, mayor's office.
Mayor's office. Yeah.
This pay plan for 5,000?
Yeah.
I didn't get a number for, it was something we said about Lower Eastern Shore?
Yeah, Keith, we're gonna have to check. I don't know where that lived. I think it was in the HCDD budget, though. Lower Eastern Shore.
Heritage Council.
Heritage Council, they had a little stipend in the past. Just wanna make sure that that's still in there.
If, if the council's okay with it, we'll, we'll do the research quickly today to figure out if it was included.
Yeah, that's fine. Just let everybody know.
Um, I thought probably an adjustment should be made for what legislation was discussed last night. Do we, do we wanna reduce our real property tax estimate by some 20,000 or whatever to cover the new public safety first responder program?
Yes. Because that's, that would be mandated by legislation.
So, I don't, I, I don't know what that will be. I'm sure it'll build as people become aware of it, but there's some money, 20,000, I think would be the minimum that we would expect.
Okay.
So, I took that away from the revenues.
The chipper, we're not gonna touch this year. I think that's it, right? Because daycare's a break even if we do it. Otherwise, we wouldn't do it till next year.
Yeah. And did you wanna do anything with HCDD training? That didn't get moved over if we do.
I, I just say do the mandate because I know it was a little bit more than the mandated number and then you may have to make decisions during the year.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll be fine.
Julia, see, anything else? I don't see anything.
I don't think so. I think that's, that's everything.
Keith, you okay now?
Uh, yes.
All right, could you scroll again a little bit for me? Okay. What is the, what is that speed camera thing on the bottom?
Once, once we get all the numbers tallied, we, we have three categories that we put, the use of surplus. First is anything that was used to fund capital items. The next is what we used from the previous year for the police speed camera.
Gotcha. I remember.
And then operating. We, we do, we do have a limit that, and here, per policy updated in 2010, we, uh, we're, we, we're only allowed to use a certain percentage of surplus to fund operating. So, we have to take out the capital and we have to take out the capital that relates to the speed camera in order to see what is left in use of surplus and compare it to that. But we do, we do exceed that. When we exceed it, we, we, we try not to exceed it by that more than what our typical variance is. Our typical variance is 1.6, so 1.6 million. So, that gives us often a break even. So, if we hit the 1.6, we would hope to break even during the year. So, what, what this is telling us so far is, is, you know, the total use of surplus might be in the neighborhood of 123,000 if things went as planned.
Gotcha. Okay, that explains it. Thank you very much. All right, I think, ladies and gentlemen, I think we're, we're in good shape. I appreciate everybody's input. It's been interesting, to say the least, to do a budget this way. I've never done it. I don't think any of us ever have. So, thank you for your participation, for, for also being prepared. And as always, Keith, thank, please thank your group for the preparation. It's become easier and easier every year, except for our little COVID problem that we've had. But, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your and your, you and your staff. It was a job well done. I know tough decisions have to be made. And my prayer is that after the feds and the state figure out what's going on, hopefully we won't be impacted too negatively during the course of next year. So, thank you, everyone. And thank PAC 14 for reporting. And, um, everybody be safe and we'll, we'll see you next, next Tuesday. Thank you, everyone.